Um, where were those sleeves that they put across? Oh, those are here. Yep. Please rise. Oh, we need roll call.
Here.
Here.
You two make it so easy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any comment? No, Bruce doesn't want to talk.
Is Bruce's birthday today?
Oh, really?
How old is he?
Eighty-four.
Young chicken.
Okay, so then that brings us to the action items.
Uh, I would move to approve the January thirty-first Building and Grounds Committee meeting minutes.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes two to zero.
Do we have February twenty-eighth?
No, it's just...
Okay.
So we'll skip that.
I would move to, uh, the February twenty-eighth meeting minutes till the next board meeting.
Okay.
All in favor?
We'll do that, yeah. All in favor, aye. Okay, so then we'll review the request procedure memo.
Yeah, I just, if you had a chance to look at this, any changes before we take it to the board? I think you reviewed it last week.
Yeah, we did.
We got it.
I think it's the procedure we're following, and that's what we're doing.
I just outlined it.
Right.
I put in there the comments from Matt Norfolk, the attorney.
Yeah, so I moved that, we moved that forward to the board with support from this board?
It's on the agenda.
Okay. Well, good. Then it's taken care of.
Yeah, there's no changes on it. I just wanted you to have a chance to review it.
So then we're to review of the government center campus landscaping plan. Now Laurel had said she was going to have the tree list that MSU was recommending.
Uh, well, she has, she has passed this off. I'm not sure exactly. It was not here at last meeting, obviously, but there's that, and then she...
She did send, um, a list.
Right.
But it was a very short list.
Yeah, but she did say she would have them on paper at our meeting, so I didn't print it out. Yeah.
This must be it.
Yeah. That's what she told me anyway. And I believed her.
And she always follows through.
Yeah, this is the one.
Yeah, I can't really read this stuff.
And then we did get a, I did get, oh, and this, and see, and this is the print that she sent us too of the gardens.
Right.
You know?
Well, I think we've determined that we really don't have space in the garden.
Right.
And I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench out here today. Um, I've been thinking about this, and I'm wondering if it would not better serve the community to have the tree planted at Old Settlers Park for a couple reasons. Um, one, we've lost trees there, and I don't know, you know, what the big picture is for the park, if they were planning on replacing those trees. And two, I anticipate in the future that events may be held around the tree to celebrate. Um, what, is it the Nineteenth Amendment?
I think it is.
Yeah. So, you know, when we talk about putting the tree along the roadway as a canopy, we talked a little bit about, in the event there was an event, and, you know, up on the campus, added traffic around the sheriff's department, our parking lot a lot of times is full. It just competes with parking. And down here, and I think you were gonna talk to the veterans.
I know.
You know, um, we'll hear about that today, but I just thought more people would be able, I, I don't see a lot of people coming here looking at the tree and the plaque. It would have more visibility in our perk. So I'm throwing that out there, um, as an option.
Well, back to your first comment. Help you out, Jerry. I think we lost about fifty-eight trees. Does that sound about right?
Right.
And actually, it actually was a blessing. I think most people agree that, because it looked awful at first, but once we cleaned it out, got rid of all the stumps, which we did several years ago.
Right.
It really has kind of opened it up a little more, and it looks quite natural and pretty good the way it is. So I don't think there's any talk about adding trees to the park, not to replace those that were taken out.
Right, but I'm saying we did lose...
Oh, yeah, fifteen, I'm almost sure it was fifteen trees.
Right, we lost a lot of trees there, and to put, uh, a tree such a, you know, for the purpose of, um, you know, for their purposes, that it might, uh, be seen by more of the general public than it would be seen here. And if there were to be events or a picnic or something where they would want to celebrate that day, they would have the picnic tables, they'd have a view, it's a beautiful location, you know, so that's kind of what I was thinking.
Mike, I know what you're saying. What happened before we had the storm, we were always having trouble trying to grow any type of grass because it's very sandy there. And because of the canopy, because of the age of the trees, and like Jeff was saying, you know, it's opened things up where we're now able to grow grass and have a better ground level, um, situation, uh, instead of just sand and moss, you know, in places we didn't grow. Because sunlight cannot get in there because of the huge trees, the age of them and the canopy. So if we start putting more in, they would probably be fighting for light.
Well...
Short trees, and, uh, then, of course, then you shield the ground again, then you're going back to, uh, less grass. Okay, and, and that's what happens with that, and it's tough enough to mow now or whatever he does, but the more trees, it can, uh, cause more issues.
Well, and that's a great point, however, we're looking, um, at a tree that would be very small and would take years to get to forty or sixty feet. And during those years, we're gonna have other tree loss because of the age of the existing trees that are there. So...
Well, the tree also could be planted in a spot where it not impacted, you know, mowing too.
Right.
I assume that's what you were thinking too.
Right.
Irrigation is not prevalent out there, just there's, uh, height, there's not irrigation to the trees.
Well, one thing's we thought about, that'd be the league's responsibility to maintain the tree, water it and so forth. Well...
I'm just putting it out there for a thought, because I was thinking, um, you know, if there are event plans, then that would be a little bit more conducive to the celebration of that day as opposed to, um...
Adding more to here.
Adding more here.
Yeah.
So I, I'm putting it out there.
There are a few plaques at the park. I've, we did approve the bench for County Beansfield. There's a couple other plaques. I don't know what they, one's from the fifties and sixties.
Correct. There was something out there, but, yeah.
Cause I think there's maybe three or four plaques out there now from different events.
But that is really their request. Their request is at Government Center, you know?
But that could be an option. I mean, it's your choice.
Right.
Well, if we refuse a tree on our campus, we could use that as an alternative.
Right.
You know, and, um, that was just my thought.
So as, as far as, so we're looking at the review of the Government Center Campus Landscaping Plan. And so, I mean, basically, when we look at that, we, we know that this, the front garden, the front of the building is not the place that we want to add a tree. They have more than enough trees already there. So what we're looking, looking at is someplace outside, whether it's on the, the northeast side or the, along the roadway. You know, tho- those are the places that, if we're gonna put it on the campus, you know, or the memorial, uh, the places that we've, we've probably designated where it could go.
Yeah.
You know, and now we can add to that, uh, Old Settlers Park.
I looked at the campus coming up. Um, and we do have quite a few trees hilly through here. Not a great place along here, I don't think. The only place I would consider would be, like we talked last week, in this area here. Um, I don't even know if you have room here. This is...
So that's, that's small parking lot, this?
Right, but what are these lines, Chair?
These lines here, are those sleeves?
Yeah, are those the sleeves?
Well, yes, the, that's irrigation that comes down from those trees. It's just a line that was dropped to irrigate those two trees on each side of that entrance.
So, really, to put a tree in that area would interfere with that, more or less, unless it got moved back.
Right. Because you got the power line, and then you've got the irrigation.
Right. So, I think it's bending there.
So we, yeah, so we've, we've narrowed, at least when we look at the landscaping plan of where it would go on the campus, and I, and I'm saying, so we've got three, basically three, maybe four, if you count the east side of the building, which we're probably not gonna do. You know? So, so, and then if you add the, uh, Old Settlers, that'd be four different locations. Does that make sense? So we're looking at the reviewing it and...
So, one here, where's the other three on this?
Well, I, I, you know, when I talked to the, the veterans, it was anywhere around here.
Okay.
They, you know, then we, then it crossed here.
Somewhere.
Yeah, and then following the canopy line. Those are the three that I'm thinking of. Was there any other place here that, you know?
Do we want to really consider this side of the road?
Well, it would have to be back, you know, like if it was on this driveway, it would be back. See, there is one something there, but it would have to be back into here. Like he's got it, see how he has it back from the, the power line?
Right, but my question is, are we looking from here to here? I don't really...
Yeah, or here to here. I'm just saying either way aside.
And I don't think it's a great idea to...
Well, you're probably right.
To put a tree on that side.
That, where you're pointing to where your little finger is, that's all major trees down here, and they're gonna continue to grow. We may have to look at that as...
So I would eliminate that space.
Okay.
Now, if you want to go from the pond over and put another tree somewhere, I guess we could. Or if you...
So would you call that the north side of the, of the road?
Yes.
The northeast side?
Northeast.
Yeah, so we'd eliminate that, so it would have to be on the southeast side.
Right, I would keep it to this side.
And what's the yellow?
Gas line.
Okay. So we have to just stay away from the gas line?
Well, I don't know. You've got a lot of trees that are planted right on or along.
Right.
So, but, you know...
But it's usually down, you know, but I'm just saying, we, we would want to, if we do it now...
Right, away from the gas lines.
Yeah.
So, as far as the campus, that's my opinion.
There's three or four trees up here on this hill, up here in the field, top.
So good luck there.
That could come out because they're not doing very well.
I'm guessing the legal women want to be in a very visible spot, though.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. They don't want to be...
I don't think they're gonna...
So, that's why I...
That's why we eliminated this originally, because it can't get to it. And it's, like I say, I really believe in my mind that there's going to be events around
Right.
the tree, so, um, it's gotta be an area where they can park and, you know, have their event. So that's why I kind of leaned towards this area originally, up along here. They're gonna be walking up and down this road to get to this, I think is, you know, not a great idea.
Well, if you want to approve it, I would say, I would agree with that. This is probably the best location. It doesn't interfere with the rest of the campus.
Right.
It could be planted a spot that would not interfere with the covering grass.
Okay, so we're, I'm just saying, we're looking at three, and we're reviewing where we could put it, so, so we've narrowed it down really to here, here, or here.
No, I don't think that's a good idea.
Not in the front? No, because they wouldn't be able to go to it?
Or here.
Okay, so we're really only talking here or down here, so there's two places.
Two options.
I'm trying to interject.
Sure.
If you put a tree out in the yard,
also you have to adjust your irrigation, because otherwise you have the possibility, with a sprig that hits the tree, you have a dead spot on the other side. So we'd have to figure that one out too.
Right.
Well, if they want a tree in a different area where we don't have irrigation, then we can propose the idea that they can add to the irrigation, or they can water for the first year.
Figure the cost in of the, adding irrigation. They'd be responsible for whatever it costs to do that. So, okay, so, so we'll move on then to four. You know, we've got it down to really two spots maybe, and one is the priority, I would say.
And I would also give them the option of the perk.
Right.
Because that might be better suited.
Right.
You know?
As an option, yeah.
As an option.
So that's the three then. We're down to three with the, with adding Old Settlers.
Right.
You know? All right, so now we'll talk about, now we can talk about the plaque.
Now, let's look at these plaques, because I want to be clear. These plaques out here, what's on the tubes? I suppose I should have went and looked at it. Are those plaques?
Those identify the type of plants in that area.
Okay, so is that the type of plaque?
That we're talking about, yeah.
I'm assuming if you look at the Gallagher tree, that has that type of plaque.
Okay.
No, the Gallagher tree has a brass.
Oh, no, but it's bigger. It's that type.
It's, it's like this, but these are plastic or...
Yeah, tho- those are just identify type of plants. I assume they'd want some bigger that they would actually...
What size is the one on Gallagher's?
We could walk out.
Uh, I'm guessing eight by twelve, Jerry?
I don't think that big, but I'd have to...
Go measure it, Chair, so we know. Measure both, please, while you're out there.
Six by eight.
Cause it'd be hard to say, make one smaller than that.
Yeah, to get any kind of wording on it.
Right.
So veterans complete the canopy.
And Old Settlers.
And Old Settlers. Now, when you talk about veterans, either side of the road, is that...
Yeah, it could be either side.
Okay.
Cause there's the parking, it's all set up, you know?
Right. So, uh, what did the veterans say?
Okay, so, well, I talked to Greg Mikowski, Jeff Lacrosse, Kelly Lacrosse, um, Ken Palmon, and all veterans, all involved with the VFW and on the board there and that. I, I called Dave McCullough, but I never did get a call back from him, so... But I, after talking to four of them, I thought, I had the idea, the, that there, they said it's fine, you know, the only, they said anywhere there. They said it's a memorial and, and it can celebrate anything. It doesn't have to just be the veterans, and they don't see that as a problem. They're gonna talk to other veterans, you know, and, but they said, every one of them said they don't see a problem with it, you know? One, one said that he doesn't understand why we have to give everybody so much recognition. We're all Americans. We're all voters, we're all this. Why do we have to start separating out one from the other to give recognition? You know? He said, uh, you know, we, we did the indigenous people, or we're gonna do a plaque for them, and, you know, if they ask, so it just, we have to, he said, you know, you'll, you'll become, that will become a memorial over there. And that was just, but all the rest said, fine, just go ahead.
That's why I like the idea of having it at the park. Because at the park, you can open it up to more people, you know, and for those people who want to celebrate their day or their amount, then I just think a perk setting is, um, a better place, so.
Well, in order to keep focus at Tuesday's meeting, you should make a recommendation. Do you want the tree? And if so, yes. If you don't want a tree, make that recommendation. If not, you're gonna be opening up the whole, you're gonna spend hours...
That, that's another thing, you know, how much time do we want to spend on it?
Well, your job as a committee is to make a recommendation to the board.
Right. Well, and I, and I thought we would have one place, so we could recommend all three. These are the options.
Well, you have three, okay, you have that part, but then with, so for requests, we have, you identified three spots.
Yeah.
Now you have a specific, well, you have two specific requests actually coming up. One is the VFW, do you want to say yes? If you say no, then obviously you point.
Right.
If you say yes, then you should identify a specific spot. Cause you don't want to open up the whole debate. I mean, you have spent a lot of time on this.
Right, right.
I think the board's expecting to come up with a recommendation.
And I, and I, I don't know, I feel like the, that, that we need to recommend for it, otherwise I think it just creates too much of a controversy.
And where?
On the other side of that argument is, um, maybe we should have a policy pertaining to the campus and then look at these requests for our perks. Campus is closed because we can junk up the campus with a lot of different things. So maybe we should close the campus as far as tree donations or any other kind of donations, close the campus, but open up our perks. And because then, the perks and rec, we can develop a policy, cause I looked at their policies and I think it's pretty scary.
That was never approved.
Right.
Exactly. I was gonna raise...
There's no way we're doing it.
Right.
Well, and our, our policy is going to be not a policy.
Should be this.
Right. That's what we're talking about. That is our policy.
For any property, including parks.
Right.
Right, but what I'm saying, if we close this campus...
To say no to anyone.
To say no to everything, because then we don't have to deal with pinwheels and, I don't know, whatever else they come up with. Close the campus to that. And any request that comes in would then go to Parks and Rec. Park and Rec would then take care of, where do we want the tree? Do we want the tree? Do we want a bench? Do we want a plaque? Then that recommendation will come to the board, and then we, as the board, can decide how much stuff we want in our perks. I would prefer to see that ultimately. Close the campus. And we've got a lot going on here. We don't know what our expansion's gonna look like with, you know, over time.
Okay.
So that would be my first recommendation. Close the campus and, um...
All right, I'll second that.
Okay.
All right. So what you're saying is that any request coming from this campus, whether it's legal women voters or pinwheels or anything, we would say by board motion that's caused. However, it can be considered at the parks, basically you're saying.
Because some we don't have to deal with all, we've got a lot to deal with here, and we've got...
Well, we...
But I think if you still go with that, let's say that goes, you go to the parks, I think you still want to control not the Parks and Recs.
Right, you still use that policy.
Correct. Yes, it goes to them. We set the policies.
They can recommend, then goes back to this committee, and then you recommend to the full board.
Right, that way...
Cause you want to have control. You don't have that.
Right, that way it takes, I mean, we've had three meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we don't know enough about perks, at least I don't know enough about perks, to be able to make a decision. It can go to a review board at the parks.
So, uh, we got a request, let's say it's a legal woman votes a request. Comes into me. I have the park, because they have a committee for each of the park.
Mm-hmm.
They can review it, make a recommendation, then goes back to the Building and Grounds Committee here for you to decide.
Mm-hmm.
And then you can either agree with the recommendation or disagree and take it to the board. So you still would be following...
Simple process. Simple process.
So it gives you, as a board committee, uh, you have three parks, or four parks, really, for each Old Settlers, Miles and Veronica. And if you want trees along the path to keep it passive, which it is, I mean, there's, it gives you a lot more option too, without worrying about underground stuff.
Exactly. And then...
I agree with you.
Cause I think this is a struggle.
Yeah, we should make sure that the commissioners see this.
Yeah, I'll have it on the screen.
Okay, good.
We'll get it. So you can walk, it's hard to, in a pack, it's gonna get too small.
Right.
Right.
I think put it on the screen, blow it up, and you can walk through just like we did this morning.
This isn't everything that's underground and sewer lines.
Well, and the other thing too is if you think about this...
It's good.
If you think about this...
They may want to expand down there too. Veterans in, in that yard, who knows someday.
You get, you get ten things out here, or ten new trees, or six or seven new benches. You know, now it's a problem.
Yeah.
When I was in UC, it got to a point where the board actually passed the policy, pretty much the same thing. The concern was it started to look like a graveyard, cause all these plaques were honoring different people that passed away, and you say no to one, how does that, well, how can you, this family have a plaque or a tree? So they actually kind of went through the same thing, and came up with the same policy that, no more.
Yeah, and I, I think if we begin this process, especially here, that, um, you know, it's just, it's gonna be a mess down the road. Parks, to me, is a place where you want to put that stuff. We put the bench in, you put a tree in, it's like I said. They, if they want to have an event, they can have an event. I'm sorry, but I think we should close the campus to all of it.
You actually are following past practices, because at least since I've been here, nothing's been allowed to be coming on this campus. The only thing you allowed was that bench at the park.
Right.
For County Beansfield.
Right.
I don't remember any other...
No.
...but getting requests, so you basically are following through on your past practices. You're confirming a past practice by doing this.
So, so we have the motion?
Yes.
So we have to vote on it?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes two to, two to zero.
Now, do we need to discuss the plaque? We should have a policy of some sort on the size of plaques that will be allowed.
Well, I think they need to go through us again.
Right.
Go through the same process.
If, if it's gonna happen, and if it goes through the park, and they say it's, they, they want it to have it there, is that, I think then we could refer this to the, the park.
Yeah, but let, yeah, do the exact same process.
Yeah.
So really, this committee and the board has a final authority.
Right.
If I'm thinking, so legal women, let's just use an example. If they want a request, they have to have specific, and it talks about this, they need specific thing, so they need to tell us they want a plaque that's this size.
And, and what it says.
Five and the wording.
And the wording.
Jerry, did you measure?
Five by eight for the bronze, whatever.
Okay.
That's five by Gallagher tree, and five by seven for the plastic ones. And these, I believe you can pull out, change, that's why they're plastics, so they can change different flowers, different things, whereas a plaque would be whatever.
Permanent.
Permanent, yeah.
Well, that, since it actually was made by, when the, that tree was moved from the courthouse, so really since this building's been built, there's been nothing.
Right, well, there was Joe Dean tree that nobody even knew. Somebody just went, Jerry just went and hid it there.
It showed up one day.
Darned, Jerry.
Right off my window.
And, uh...
It's a dwarf one.
Okay, so we've made a decision on four of the five items?
Yes, so, we've already decided, I thought, on the pinwheel.
Yeah, I thought, I just wanted to confirm that, cause I wasn't here, but actually, if you pass your recommendation on that, nothing here, that takes care of that also.
Exactly, so that's all.
I, I told them the committee recommended against it this gentleman, so...
And the other thing too, as far as the planting, the type of tree, Parks and Rec can tell us what kind of tree they want.
Right.
You know?
I assume by the time you get to this committee, you have all the details.
Exactly.
So it should be a specific request, if they want a plaque, what size and what's the length of the plaque? All that, so by the time you get it, you have all that, so you don't have to debate all this.
Right, so it's...
Now you got that list that made it through, too.
Right, and we can give that to the park and rec as well, if they want to consider it, you know?
Cause they want to, they get the sky, you can make that, just to get that next...
And, I mean, I, and, and the board can say, yes, we want to put it at the, the park, and then they'd have to decide which one and where.
I think if you make the recommendation, we'll make discussion on two of them. Put her through.
And then, um, then Laurel had sent me three different, um, forms about, if we had forms for people to fill out.
Mm-hmm.
I would say we not have forms. Let them put down specifically what they want, case by case.
Well, well, that's, but, but, and that's what, I just wanted it so that they would know, you know, there's a cost involved, there's, you know...
By almost having a forum, we're almost encouraging them to do it.
Okay.
Right? I mean, really, it's their responsibility. Let them do all the research, have them come up with the details and so forth.
Okay, so you want to just skip that?
I would. I would say that.
I kind of agree with that.
If we have, if we have a form, we're almost encouraging people to.
And the form, I noticed on some, that Laurel had sent us, actually had fees attached.
Right.
You know, how do you, I mean, is that to cover the cost of what? We don't.
I think, I mean, we don't get a lot of these. I think it's better just do it case by case.
Okay.
I, I agree.
Excuse me, the, did you guys decide on specific size of the plaque and that's what it's gonna be?
Well, that's what we said, no, it would have to come, they, whoever wants it has to come up with the, with the recommendation to us.
You know, it would not larger than any plaque that we have, is what I.
Do it case by case.
Right, we'll do it case by case, but, you know, we'll look at what we have and then compare it to what they want and say it's either too big or it's too small.
I mean, a plaque on that bench for County Vinsfield is different than a plaque for John Gallagher. So, it may vary what they want.
Right, exactly. Because a plaque you can put on, on a, on a seat, you can put it on the back of the, the chair.
Well, let's say, I just mixed up, someone wants to put a drinking fountain in and pay for it. Well, that may be different than a tree versus, so I think we just need to be as flexible as possible.
Okay.
But let the group requesting all that make that decision.
Do the detailed work so that we don't tie up our time and staff time to deal.
And that, but that's, I, I mean, you're right about the plaque. That's why I wanted the form, because then all those questions could be presented. And then you could say yes or no, or it's gotta be different, you know, but.
Well, maybe, maybe we can look at some sort of internal policy as far as building and grounds or perks and recs or whatever.
I think just leave it flexible. I think he's right.
Let that organization do all the work. Now, that's what I'm gonna propose, that we can say yes or no or modify it.
Right.
Which actually fits right into what Steve said here, so.
I like it, I like it.
It's not like we're overwhelmed with these.
No, no. But I think we were very thoughtful about this and consider it so.
Well, just having this upgraded is well worth it.
Yeah, it really was. I mean, that all had to be done, I think.
I'm gonna get, I'll make copies of this for Scott to give to the park board, so I mean, you know.
Well, I also have board agenda, so we give it up to the processes.
Anything else, Wes?
No, public, are there any other comments?
Uh, no, I think we did really well today.
Yeah.
That's a good comment. Any public comments? No?
I had a.
Go ahead.
Whoever, Al, but Al.
All veterans?
All.
Stop doing your stand, of course, we're, you know, he's starting to get geared up for Memorial Day. He talked about parking issues and I explained to him that we don't have a lot of area where we can expand the parking lot, especially across the street from the veterans, because out in that field, there is underground drainage from this building, you know. And I said for a whole hour, people parked along the drive, you know, and I said they can park in this field. So, maybe we could put a sign up or something that, or even a post and then have a sign put up at that time so people would know that if parking is in that field, they still have to walk.
Well, how about, I'll just throw this out. They get a volunteer, because for the older people's walking may be a challenge, we let them use our golf cart that day.
Sure.
So, when they park, they can have someone go back with the golf cart, take them to from.
I think that's a good idea.
We just walk the new cart here.
Yeah.
Use that one from the park, but he, I told him, I said, well, you know, they can park, they're gonna park their cattle. One parks along the road, you know, make a bank. But he said, well, maybe you could put a sign up there that says, you know, field.
Yeah.
Now, it's not necessarily a bad idea to have a sign that I could attach to a post that stays as, also as a flowering stake, you know.
Yeah.
And just let it be bare except Memorial Day. I mean, if we do that, I could.
Look about, but we can offer the golf cart too.
Sure.
Right, well, and a lot of times they just put up two, put two stakes in and put a yellow ribbon and then people go and park to that, you know. I mean, or some kind of ribbon or rope, it could even be a piece of rope, doesn't really matter.
We're talking about one time a year.
Right.
For hour and a half, yeah.
Right.
But he, so I just kind of.
Actually, there's, I think there's enough parking, if we put them out in that field, there's plenty, you know, if he's got the golf cart, you know.
Well, I come over here, I'll be glad to drive the golf cart and help people. Because you're busy with, well, seriously, you're busy with the salad. We're always there. They kind of play us to hate people up and down the hill. That way, we can actually tell them, if parking top, we'll, we'll take them back and forth.
Oh, yeah.
And that way you don't, you don't have to worry about that.
Oh, one more thing, we're going to, Laurel's got it worked up, we're going to go up the bids for resealing, work on the asphalt. The entire campus, it's four years now, usually two years, three, but I'm saying that's coming up, that we'll work and then we can work towards. We got a spec sheet, you just gotta go up for how long it's supposed to work out. Anyway, that's when it works.
I want to know who you get because I have to do the same thing at my shop, so.
It's not cheap, you know.
You know, well, that's funny, because yesterday I just talked to Ron Brown, who gave my driveway. But I know, I had him, he did Jim Noaks for me and it was three thousand dollars cheaper than the others.
It's the patch you had, Miles Kimbry did the patch.
Yeah. I mean, not that it's cheap.
No, but.
I mean, he wants it, Elmers was gonna do an inch and a half, he said he'd do it two and a half.
And still, and still it's cheaper than that.
Yeah.
I was just so busy, they may not even want the small jobs, they did them high.
Right.
Elmers did nine years ago.
Ron Brown and son.
They were up a long time.
Yeah.
They've been this long time.
I have a driveway. My second driveway needs to be done. That's asphalt or concrete?
Asphalt.
Okay.
I didn't even look at concrete. We got enough of it in the house already.
And so, this.
That's what they talked about one time and never, it never even got passed person.
Okay, because when I read.
Yeah, I, when Laura gave that to me, I go, where'd this come from?
Right, and I, my question is, why are they making these kinds of policies? It's not their place.
They, they didn't go anywhere.
Okay.
Didn't go anywhere. I think someone just came up with an idea. Well, they have no authority.
Right. Are you gonna move to adjourn?
We are adjourned.
Okay.
All right, Jerry, thank you.
Yeah, I was waiting, Bill, we had more comments.
Yeah, I didn't, that's why I was asking.
I'm gonna leave this right here so I have it for meeting Tuesday.
Yeah, like I said, I'll have it on the screen.
Okay.